All right, good evening. Welcome to a Joint Planning and Development Subcommittee Town Council Meeting. It's Tuesday, November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. It's six P. M. We're here in the Veterans Room. First agenda item is called for order. Second agenda item is roll call. Counselor Adams?
Present.
Citizen Bernadette?
Here.
Citizen Larochelle?
Present.
I'm here. Jasmine Rebus is absent. Item number three. Review or discuss whether to recommend Town Council appoint Pamela Paquin to the Economic Development Commission for a three-year term. Entertain a motion to recommend to Town Council for approval.
Second.
Very good. Discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This recommendation came from Peg in regards to the current Economic Development Commission and the ability. Her memo outlines the reasons for that. I'll turn it over to Peg if she has any other comments, but I do recommend that. Thank you.
Just for the public's knowledge, Pam's been very vocal about as a local business owner wanting to see more economic development in town. She's thrown around some suggestions, and so this might be a fruitful way for her to be able to contribute to the Economic Development Commission. And then selfishly, we are desperate for a quorum.
Anyone on the committee? Counselor Adams?
Thank you. Over the years I got to know Pam, I highly recommend her for this position.
Thank you. Anyone else on the committee? Okay, Counselor Marketti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. Is Miss Paquin not going to be here tonight?
I haven't heard anything.
Is she going to be at the Town Council?
I can ask her if you'd like her to be.
Well, it just says that to elevate some of her ideas. I just was curious what some of her ideas were.
Counselor Adams?
We've done this multiple times where people didn't show up at all. So, I just recommend it.
I wasn't really done yet, but that's fine, Counselor Adams. I appreciate your comment there.
Anytime there, Counselor Marketti. I can do that for you.
Okay, no problem.
All right.
All I wanted to know is what are some of her ideas were. I'm not saying I'm against her appointment, just would like to ask her what's all her ideas were, because I think it's important that we have economic development in this town. Let me see what she's got some ideas. Maybe she's got some good ideas.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good.
I'll just refer you.
In the past, some of the things, if I could just direct the answer to Counselor Marketti, she has talked about wanting activities and restaurants in the downtown. Obviously, when she has people coming in for her agritourism, she calls it, and her Airbnb, she wants to be able to suggest locations for people to go in the downtown. She loves the downtown. She loves Southbridge. She wants to see people really enjoy it. She's also had some interest in the recreation, you know, what could be promoted for recreation in the downtown and surrounding.
Very good. Counselor Shova? I mean, Shanja?
No, not in.
Okay. Counselor, Chairman Lautz?
I know Pam. She's from my neck of the woods. The only I can tell you is, she's a balanced person that's interested in a lot of different things. Not only economic development, open space, she's on the planning board. Not only that, I think she would complement Peg on the energy level that she brings to the table. She is high-energy and she is a worker, and I do, I would ask the same question, you know, what does she want to do? But I know her and I know what she's about. I just think she'd be a great add-on to the committee.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Very well, all those in favor? Unanimous of all present. Item number four. Review discuss the Town Manager's proposal to reorganize the Economic Development Office and reinstate the position of Director of Economic Development and Planning. Entertain a motion to recommend to Town Council for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Adams, second by Larochelle. Discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This came about during my time here, and I know it's been talked about in the previous year by some counselors about the Economic Development and Planning Office and the staffing in that office. If many do recall, and I happened to be on council when this took place, when Rosemary Scrivens had left and departed, the former Town Manager at the time was trying to determine how he wanted to have that office move forward. And then during that period of time, he indicated, and I remember the conversations, about splitting the duties between Peg and Eric. Eric was going to assume some of the duties relative to redevelopment authority stuff, maintain business resource entities, meet with developers, and interpret and gather reports, where Peg was going to do the community development grant, also work with the redevelopment authority. And he split those duties, adjusted salaries, and then eliminated the position of Director of Economic Development and Planning. As I come aboard and work now as Town Manager and look at that office, as everybody knows, Eric has departed, so he no longer, we have no longer have that individual in that office that Eric had taken those duties that were assumed by that position. So Peg has now assumed all the duties of what a Director of Economic Planning and Development would do. Furthermore, our bylaws are pretty specific as to fact that we will have under section three dash three hundred, an Economic Development Planning Director of. It's very specific that the Economic Development Plan Development shall be under the control and supervision of an Economic Development and Planning Director who shall be appointed by and responsible to the Town Manager. And it outlines their duties. So my belief is that because Peg, Ms. Dean, has been doing duties and has done a lot of work with the redevelopment authority now, has worked very closely with the planning board, has also worked now closely with the Historic Commission and other groups, that she really has taken on the role of Economic Development and Planning. And Katie, who is here this evening, is now doing this community development block grant programs. So my recommendation is to reinstate that position of Director of Economic Development and Planning. Would be within the budget line items, grant, CDBG grant, SIMS funding for that. It's within the budget. It's within our bylaws, and I strongly recommend this position.
Thank you. Committee.
Is there any change in, let's put it, when you originally had Rosemary there, is there any change as to what her qualifications would have to be?
She meets all the qualifications.
I know she meets them, but I'm just saying that, you know, did they say a master's and something?
The qualification should be in the packet. I believe I submitted it in the packet, the job description. Should have been anywhere. If it's not, it should be. It outlines what?
Here's the qualifications.
Bachelor's degree in public or business administration, economic development or closely related field, five years of responsible experience in municipal economic development, or equivalent combination of education experience. So this is the original job description. That was under Rosemary and Ms. Dean.
She more than meets the qualifications. I understand that. I was just curious.
Yeah, no, that's what it is. Thank you for the question.
Thank you.
Counselor?
Yeah, I'll, whoever wants to speak. This chair. I'll do it right now.
Okay.
Just the question was qualifications. Is it preferred? Is that what it says? I didn't hear you.
The qualifications say.
Recommended.
Master's degree in public or business administration.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
We've had disagreements with all positions.
Yeah.
Of the qualifications. Would it be opposed to add the words preferred instead of saying what the actual is? And the reason I say that is sometimes a person has qualifications that don't meet the job description. For me, a job description is an aid to help me determine on who I would pick. So I think from here on in, if you put in the job description that you bring forward, maybe add the words preferred instead of saying must-have or whatever. It's just, I just think, I think those are aids.
Yeah.
And sometimes you have to go around, make it work.
Well, I'm certainly that. Ms. Dean has all those qualifications.
Well, she does, and I had a good discussion with her, and I have no problems supporting her. I just think in future.
Right.
It makes it easier to get somebody that might not quite need the qualifications, but has it somewhere else in the.
Well, it does say a combination of education and experience. So it does take an, it does say, it doesn't say must-have. It says any combination thereof, but we can certainly take a look at the preferred.
Because I just, you know, I have no problem supporting Ms. Dean. She's answered all my questions to my satisfaction. And I think I put a couple of questions to her and asked her why, and I was happy with the results of being answered.
So actually, Mr. Chairman, this is the position we're talking about? The next agenda item would be that, actually? No, no, I'm just, I did reference Ms. Dean, but we had talked about the position itself and then the appointment would be next. No, that was my fault as well.
Okay. Anyone else? Chairman Lautz?
I think what we have here is a situation that was created by indecision of the previous manager. We have a Town Manager on board now that Dr. History has the knowledge, whether it be the job descriptions of the organization. It's very important. Qualifications are very important. But we're in a situation due to indecision of a manager that we've held back a person that is qualified, but most of all has earned the right to be in that position through performance, which you can take your qualifications and read them. But I have seen a lot of qualified people take positions in town like the previous manager had a great resume, but when it came to performance and implementation, failed. So I think in this case here, we have a person in the job description that fits for not only she's already performed, she's earned the right to have that top position, and I support this adjustment. And I also support straightening out this problem and putting a head back on the horse. And that would be our candidate that we have. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Anyone else? Very well, all those in favor? Unanimous of all present. Item number five. Review discuss the Town Manager's appointment of Margaret Peg Dean as Director of Economic Development and Planning effective immediately. Entertain a motion to recommend that the Town Council confirm the Town Manager's appointment.
Second.
Very good. Mr. Manager?
Well, I kind of combined it with the previous conversation, but it's absolutely my pleasure to recommend appointment to this position. Actually, Peg was away on vacation. Didn't even know I was putting this forward until she returned, so she certainly has earned this promotion to this position. She's working very hard. I know she's been attending, and I have attended with her the Southbridge Business Partner Association meetings, where she has been actively talking to different individuals within the business community about thoughts about businesses in the downtown core district or just Southbridge in general. She also has, and I know, conversation that we have about, for instance, Sturgis Coffee Roasters, which left town, and Peg has certainly been working aggressively to try to make sure that they can possibly come back to town. And immediately reaches out. When we have a conversation, there'll be an email that'll go out right away saying, hey, I'm just following up on this space. If we can meet, we had a conversation with a local business owner that has some issues with property that is looking to possibly sell, and she's working on grants to assist this business owner because of some large ticket items to make that business and that building viable to continue in this downtown district. So there is no doubt that she is doing everything possible to not only continue and help Katie grow in the CDBG world and all the grants that have been going on, but that she is working very aggressively to promote Southbridge and work out with the business community any way that she can to say, hey, why not Southbridge? So that's why I have no doubt recommend her for appointment.
I don't know how many times we've said and praised Ms. Dean over the last five years that I've been on the council, so she came as a CDBG coordinator. I don't know how much more you can talk about the successes the town has had because of her direct influence. And, you know, I gotta tell you, you know, working with her on many occasions and dealing with some of the stuff that she's dealing with, and it's one-person show in a lot of ways, now I'm glad to see she has a supporting cast, and hopefully we can work on Ken's contract down the road. You know, I, you know, I couldn't, there's no words to say how much more I would recommend this individual for this position. Way, way late in the ballgame, and we really appreciate it. I will say, the first time when she took over from Ms. Scrivens, said, what are we short on? And she said, grants. She says, this town deserves grants and rates grants, and, you know, one day hopefully we don't get those grants because economically we're in that, we're in that position. But she said it, and she, she has done that for the town. So I know there's a lot of supporting cast on that side, but the fact is, it's her ideas, it's her knowledge and her education and her loyalty in a lot of ways to this town that doesn't have to be especially an hour drive or so for every time. So I couldn't, I've already said my words, but absolutely top-notch in my book. Thank you. Great choice, Mr. Town Manager.
Committee? No, anyone else? Okay. Counselor Marketti?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. I don't have a problem with Ms. Dean's promotion as Director of Economic Development. I just wanted to hear from Ms. Dean, and I know that Town Manager has always spoken, Counselor Adams has already spoken, and I thought maybe Ms. Dean could tell us, you know, what her ideas are for expanding and improving economic development in Southbridge.
I don't, yeah, I don't mind. You don't mind? All right. So just briefly, just to speak to the qualifications, so I do have a master's in public administration. I come from a town administrator background in a small town. I was encouraged by my peers to come to a bigger town because they said I'd really thrive, and I felt like I have, I feel like this town is the perfect match for me. This is an aside to the economic development that you all should know. I was in the Basilica de Notre Dame up in Montreal, and I got the call from the Town Manager's office asking me to come interview here. And so it was like, it felt like fate. It was very strange, right? And so I have felt very connected to this town ever since. I don't know what it is, but it's like a very heartfelt position for me. So I want nothing but the best for the town. So obviously, number one is increase tax base. How do we do it, right? And so I think you all know me already enough to know what I'm doing, right? There's things, I don't feel like it's any big surprise. I'm taking your master plan, your whatever plans, and I'm trying to bring them to fruition. Similar to seeing potential in the boards and commissions, how can we bring them into the mission that they're already charged with to help, you know, move things forward? So like, for instance, what's the charge for the Economic Development Commission? It is promote strong vibrant town economy in order to increase the tax base, provide jobs, good services to the community, work to promote entrepreneurial spirit throughout various sectors in town, et cetera, et cetera, right? All these things like that, that is in essence, that is what we are doing. How we are doing it? Well, I'm working with, we've been trying to promote the commercial industrial manufacturing parcels that we can since I started as a department supervisor two years ago. And that means, you know, there's these conversations with developers. It's providing, I created a sort of marketing list of accomplishments that I presented to the Town Council that we bring to developers and we talk about, look, these are all the things we're doing. This is why you should consider us, you know. We're looking at sectors, are there sectors that we could recruit into town and bring in, right? And then in the meantime, it's the, it's the day-to-day with our businesses. Before I got into the department supervisor position, since getting into the department supervisor position, I've been working with the clerk's office to now get the emails from the business certificates to now mail a welcome letter that talks about the Southbridge Business Partnership and the Chamber and make sure all the existing businesses are feeling like they're welcomed and supported. And then I'm using those emails to then fire off whatever information I feel like would be useful for them. In regards to the actual data, community development and planning, as you know, since I've started as the department supervisor, we've gotten the master plan, the open space plan, and the urban renewal plan, renewal plan, all onto the capital plan, and have since gotten two out of three budgeted through grants. When it comes to the grants, I am not just casting the net as wide as possible. I'm making sure those grants are grants that are already towns' priorities, that are things that are useful for the town, because ultimately it's tax dollars either way, right? So I feel like those funds need to be used wisely. When it comes to the housing, we, there wasn't much going on with housing when I started as the supervisor. We have since gone for the housing production plan. We're since trying, you know, trying to be as proactive as we can about reinvigorating the housing rehab in the CDBG. Through the CDBG, we're now doing the commercial rehab. A large amount of CDBG funding is going towards commercial rehab. Why is that? Curb appeal, support the local economy as much as we can. So those are just some of the ways in the everyday activity. And then, all things aside, it serves the town to have the title of an Economic Development Director advocating on the town's behalf instead of some CDBG coordinator, right? When I'm sending emails to whoever, the state, the federal, you know, all these agencies, partners, trying to get support for stuff, it'll have a little more heft if you've got that title behind it. So that would be my opinion.
Thank you. Very good answer.
New caveat, I know the Town Manager touched on this, but, or may have in a way, you know, just a few months ago, when everything was chaotic in here, we had no Town Manager, we had nothing, you know, DPW was questionable, and, you know, as far as the director and the positions and the, you know, all these things were happening in this town. It was really quick and fast and furious. I happened to sit on a CMPO meeting and found out that our tip project may get moved. And first thing, the first person I reached out to, and that was not the inner Town Manager, not anybody else, it was Peg. Do you know about this? Because if anybody knew about it, it was going to be Ms. Dean. And now, she didn't know about it, because that's not a purview. That's not what her job and title had. But out of nowhere, she took the role of the DPW Director. She took the Economic Director. She, yes, she did. You know, and the thing is, you know, that's why I said there was a chaos in a bit within that other department. You stepped to the plate when you didn't have to do any of that, and you, she showed the true work ethic of making sure things got accomplished and not just sitting in front of a camera and just pontificate on itself. So again, way outside her realm, but if that, if it wasn't for her, we may have lost those two tips. So, you know, that's millions of dollars in this town that have been planned for years under the redevelopment authority and a few other places. Thank you.
Chair, if I may just, one more comment. I just also want to say, you know, one of the role, one of the important parts of this role, besides going after the external funds, the, you know, everything we can for resources, is getting people at the right tables to be able to advocate for the town. And so one of the things that's recently happened is we now have Council Chair, or excuse me, Planning Development Chair John Daniels sitting on our local, it's the Metropolitan Planning Organization who's approving all of those transportation improvement projects. He is now the Chair for the subregions. He's the one chairing the group that will approve all those tip projects. Highly strategic position, in my opinion. So it's, it's that part of making sure all the right players are in place. I feel like that will help us get farther.
Counselor? Great. Counsel Shanja?
Ms. Dean, I take away from your education with my comment that I had. I know you're well-educated, your child experience, I know people in Shawmont that knew you. It was just in the event that someday that you leave, and if somebody in your department is more qualified, don't have your qualifications or educational background, it gives us the opportunity to use, and that's one of the reasons I would, anyway, I don't question your, your education or know your work experience.
Counsel Lautz?
Yeah, I agree with a lot of the previous speakers. I'm a big fan of knowing the history. And when I first got elected to the Town Council, there was an Economic Development Director that could not answer questions, and there was this little lady scurrying up to the podium and giving the answer. And then the next question, it would do the same thing. And I said, who is that girl? And then I found out it was just going Peggy Dean. And then we further worked together on various other things, you know, support. We've had differences of opinion on our politics, but when you really look at the person, the person, she is Southbridge first agenda. And with that, along with her qualifications, and most of all, proven track record, you have to put the head on the horse. And, and it's right, when you get in boardrooms and you are a director, you're no longer some underling, you are the director. And then John Daniels, who becomes the chairman of that board he's on. If we get a state representative from Southbridge, and we all know that it's going to be Gabe Adams, we'll connect all the dots for the town.
It's a big if.
Thank you. Anyone else? Very good. All those in favor? Unanimous of all present. With the record show, that Counsel Rebus has entered the meeting. Item number six. Review and discuss whether to recommend Town Council accept the Massworks Grant for two million dollars for infrastructure improvements on River Crane Street and allow the Town Manager to sign any related paperwork.
So moved.
I think we talked about this grant in the Town Council, so this would just allow us to accept this grant and move it forward to the next stage as we work with DPW in the planning stages. And if you have any other questions, I'll let Ms. Dean. And just as an aside, on the next number of items, I will just defer to Katie and the economic team.
The economic team. Very good. Very good. Committee, any questions?
No, I just, I know Counsel Marketti had brought this up before. Quite a few councils have brought it up as far as getting some of this work done in that area and trying to expand it out as far as it possibly could. And again, you know, two million dollars is not a, you know, just a walk-in-the-park type of grant to apply for. So again, it shows why we recommend to the Town Council.
Mr. Chairman, just to echo that, the DPW Director and I had had a conversation about what our next phase would be after we completed the current projects for this fiscal year or this paving system year, and River Crane was one of the conversations, and we were like, how are we going to pay for it? And that night, we got the letter saying, by the way, here's a Massworks man for two million dollars, which we didn't know what it was for. It was just a letter that said two million dollars until Ms. Dean said, oh, that's the River Crane. And all of a sudden now, the DPW Director and our team now can sit there going, okay, how are we going to bring it now to fruition? So it's a great win for Southbridge.
And I remember Counsel Marketti bringing up River Crane a long time ago, saying that it was a good project to look into. So it's come to fruition. That's a DPW committee? Okay. Any other committee discussion? In the audience? Very good. All those in favor? Unanimous of all present. Item seven. Review discuss whether to recommend Town Council approve applying for the rebuilding American Infrastructure with Sustainability and Equity Raze Grant to modernize Hamilton Street, hiring BSC Group for four thousand eight hundred dollars, using Town Council Reserve Funds to help apply and allow the Town Manager to sign any related paperwork. Entertain a motion to recommend to Town Council for approval.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just as an aside, we've talked about the Raze Grant in Town Council, so everybody's aware of it, how close we were to getting this. This would just allow BSC Group to maybe fine-tune some additional information to even bolster it for the next application process. My only comment is, I'm using right now Town Council Reserve because we do not have any monies that sit here going, hey, well, if we have grant opportunities for match, maybe something that we can try to look at when we do the budget. I am concerned about Town Council Reserves because right now, the Town Council, when they did the budget, cut twenty thousand dollars from the hundred thousand dollar appropriation already, and as of all the transfers that we've done, we're going to be at forty-one thousand, a little over forty-one thousand, which is a little over fifty percent for the rest of the fiscal year. So I do have concerns about the Town Council Reserve. I know we had conversation, we will get forty-five hundred back at some point from the National Grid for the Mass Save. I know Counselor Adams, we talked about possibly doing some things with the ARPA. So at this point, I would recommend taking it from Town Council Reserve, and then we can have some conversations about either ARPA funds to do some of the replenishment to Town Council Reserve, so we can have a safe balance, or at some point, when free cash gets certified at, whatever that may be, then we can look at maybe a transfer to the Town Council Reserve, but.
Do you have this? If I want to excuse myself quick and check on the Historical Commission?
Sure.
Okay. And her?
So that's my spiel on the Town Council Reserve. It's an important thing for us to get this grant through, so, for us to be able to do this, so. But I do have some, just put it on the table, I do have some concerns about the town.
Very good. Counsel Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is one of the ones that we talked about for the ARPA, correct? The four thousand eight hundred dollars? And this one was this?
No, this is another one. I do have the spreadsheet. I can send it to everybody what we've spent. So we've, we had Goddard Electric, the plan is. So we've, we had Guardian Electric, the planning assistant grant for 2,600, National Grid for 7,200, so, and then we had the last, the the big one we took out last night for the 13,000, so.
Yeah, I'll just, just, uh, you know, we're off the kind of the agenda in a sense, but I'll I'll definitely put this into the ARPA meeting and see what the they recommend at that point in time. Just put it down here so I can write it down. Thank you, sir.
Councilor Arrivas.
Just curious about the timeline for the application.
Uh, I know she's working on it, I'm not sure when the application would be in, but she'll definitely get it in on time. Um, I don't know the exact date, unfortunately, she had stepped away for that meeting, but um.
In her timeline, she says March.
March.
Yeah, I'm glad to see this coming back up. Um, it is an important, you know, part of town that we've talked about before, and it is um an important project that I think is worth um investing that money into during for the application. If we can replenish um the amount in there in some way, that that would also be great. But I do think it's it's worthy of investing the money now.
I I mean, we do have stabilization, and we do have other accounts that if we had to, in a pinch. I do know in the debrief, there were some specific recommendations that you could get a little more data, and that's where Peg reached out to BSC Group to try to have them get that additional data, so that we could have it as part of the grant application.
Very good. Anyone else on the committee? Any audience? Very good. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number eight. Review discuss requesting extensions from the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities of Community Development Development Block Grant Fiscal Year 21 through December 31st, 2024, in order to complete grant activities and expend funding. Entertain a motion to recommend to town council for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Very good. Uh, Katie, should we go first?
Yes, yeah, I could refer to Katie.
Okay, Katie.
Um, yeah, and each of this motion and the following three are all connected, they're just separated into different motions. Um, but basically, uh, for our CDBG, uh fiscal year 21, currently our um our our deadline is um December 31st of this year, but um we are looking to extend each quarter through 20, December 2024, in order to um, one, uh, do the River Crane uh construction that's um already allocated for this grant, and uh, two, for uh the new project that we've um determined through a public hearing to um rein- reinstall uh playground equipment at the Main Street Rotary Club. Um, and that decision came through a public hearing process and some public engagement through an online survey. Um, so uh in the public hearing, we discussed um our remaining funds for both the fiscal year 21 and fiscal year 20 grant. Um, and so a a little bit of a summary is in the packet, but uh for fiscal year 20, we had a remaining of about 18,900, and for fiscal year 21, we had a estimated remaining of about 40,200. Um, so all total, that's about 59,000, um, which was in the range of a quote we received from Emmy O'Brien um to uh build a new playground. And based on um both responses at the public hearing and um responses to our online survey, which had um Southbridge residents ranking priorities of three different uh park improvement projects, we saw the most popularity for the Main Street project, so um this would be um a main reason for the extension of the fiscal year 20 grant along the fiscal year 21.
Very good. Councilor Adams.
Just a quick question, the Main Street Rotary Club Park. Right on Main Street, right on the, right, where do they burn?
The burn.
Yes.
Insurance money?
No, it wasn't insurance.
Okay, just asking a question, that was, I thought it was the same spot, but I just wanna make sure.
Is that the 600 block?
Mm-hmm.
That one, okay. We said rotary, I'm thinking like the rotary, what kind of park is gonna go there? Okay, it's a 600 block, that one is for sure. Thank you.
Rotary Club still?
There.
Uh, Councilor Shanier.
Couple of questions, what was the survey results of the three projects?
Uh, yeah, so um we asked uh residents to rank priorities, so there was um Main Street Playground uh improving the Heritage Trail and um doing a mural project at Capillo Park. Um, and so based on um if each respondent said, if they said one was their most prioritized um project, two, three, um, over 50% of respondents put Main Street as their um most prioritized project.
In all my years of driving up and down Main Street, I have never, ever seen somebody in that park being used. All my years, I have no memory recollection of it, I realize I'm old, but I have never, ever seen the park used. And in fact, when I was on council, I, back many years ago, I questioned, because him Clark was the DPW director, and there was no lighting in there, that we paid for lighting, which there is now. But in all the time that I've walked and down Main Street, all kinds of days, I have never, ever seen anybody use that park. So for me, I would just like a picnic table, some benches in there and those kind of things, and move uh the playground part of it to another areas of town. It's just, I I I don't know, I know, it's not that I'm trying to downgrade the neighborhood, but I've never seen anybody use it, never. I I mean, councilors?
I have, but it's no Henry Street.
Right.
No, just like little, little ones.
It's a little park, yeah, you got one down on uh Clifton Street that they replaced, I think, a few years ago. Uh, I don't even know if Monroe Street has one, but it's just, I'm, I guess, but my more concern is the location of the park being on Main Street. That's all. I mean, I know it's fenced in, but I mean, I'll I'll support it, I'm not gonna go against it, I just uh I just think that a playground would be better served, you know, in a different area that is uh would be more utilized than on Main Street. Because jump the sidewalks, they park, they jump the sidewalks to park against the houses. I mean, drive down there, there's no curb cuts for the for the parking, and we put the kids in there, I'm gonna say in a semi-safe environment, I don't think it's a good location for a park. That's all.
Thank you. Councilor Arrivas.
I think it's, it's, I've seen it utilized by kind of like the people that live around there, um mostly like younger little kids, 'cause it's a very small park. Um, but I do think it's important for the people in that neighborhood who can't get to the other parks, um to have a a place space for the really young little kids that are, it's hard to walk with them, you know, to another park further into town. So I do think that the families that live in the, in the three deckers.
It would be great.
No, 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 let it finish.
It would be great to have another area near that park, I mean, somewhere off of Main Street, I I don't know if there is such an area there, that's all. You just uh, I support it as presented.
Chairman Ozil.
Mr. Chairman, through chat, trot lots came into existence, the neighborhood walking. There was never anybody supposed to drive up to a trot lot. It was the little trot lots that were put there for the tiny, the smaller kids, that would be in walking distance. Because it's such a heavily populated area, that's why it was chosen. Just like on Clifton Street, it's kind of a thickly settled district, there's tremendous amount of use down there. Um, Main Street maybe doesn't get as much use, but the thing is, when you come into town, the concept of the trot lot being there, people drive by, they see a trot lot, kids are in vision. Nobody's gonna drive by and grab a kid when you're right on Main Street. If you put it on an off street or somewhere else, then you gotta kind of light it and you gotta watch it. Uh, and all the kids aren't alone with their parents, but I I really do believe that the trot lots, the concept was good until leaving to the neighbors.
Thank you.
One more question, can we make sure that it's insured?
Uh, yeah, we'll throw it to the insurance.
Make sure all the parks.
Oh, yeah, we will. I I know on the uh the park across the street, we got an immediate email once it was all finished, we made sure that went to the treasurer, and the treasurer sent it over to our insurance company for the park across the street. So we will do the same with the other parks, make sure.
Miss Dean.
I don't know if it's worth mentioning also that it's not going to be exactly the same, it's going to be um uh five different, in uh, there's pictures, okay, so for the public who can't see it, there are one, two, three, four, five, six, six different pieces. So it spreads it out, it will have a different feel, a little bit of a different feel, uh it'll draw the kids more away from Main Street a little bit more, um and and having new, as we know, kind of attracts uh the neighbors again, right? So maybe there'll be a new interest, a renewed interest in the park, hopefully.
You're convinced, yeah.
Anyone else? Very well, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number nine. Review discuss amending CDBG fiscal year 21 to move Activity 4D Code Enforcement and Program Income Funds to Activity 6C Parks and Recreation, which will fund installation of new equipment at the Main Street Rotary Club Park. Entertain a motion to recommend to town council for approval.
So moved. Second.
Katie?
Um, yeah, uh, this is mostly the same, uh, I guess a clarification on the the funds that I described earlier will be being moved from the code enforcement activity that um hasn't had a position to fund. So uh we're reallocating this to Parks and Recreation, um and to note that uh we do have funds available if at any time code enforcement officers are hired, that'll come out of our fiscal year 22, 23 grant.
Okay. Ms. uh Councilor Arrivas.
Um, I just have a question about the equipment. And I've just been doing a lot of playground conversations um in the last couple of weeks, but um, so are, will there be equipment for um for like neurodivergent little ones, or like how accessible will the equipment be? I know that there was like a slide and climbing equipment, but I didn't know if there were any other um pieces that would be put in there similar to Henry Street that that are going in.
Um, yeah, I I couldn't speak to that directly now, but I could um later send you the um listing that Emmy O'Brien sent of their equipment.
Great, thank you.
Anyone else? Councilman Mike Kenny.
Mr. Chairman, for you. So just to, I know you've already talked about it, but I was waiting for this, Gina. The Rotary Club Park is the one after Cross Street, right in there?
Yes.
When I drive by there, it doesn't look to me like it was burned or anything, so I don't understand. When I go by, I look, I don't see it now, I never walked in there. Was it burned in the back or something, or?
Right in the front, you can see that, no, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
It don't look like it was damaged to me, but.
Yeah, it is.
It is, it is. I think that, a meeting that we held, a meeting in your office, Peg, and that was, the decision was to fix this park. All right, thank you.
Very good. Anyone else? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number 10. Review discuss requesting extensions from the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities of CDBG fiscal year 20 through June 30th, 2024, in order to complete grant activities and expend funding. Entertain a motion to recommend to town council for approval.
So moved. A second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Miss Dean.
Katie did ask me how she should arrange these motions. I wish we could make this simpler, I, but we think that this is the, unfortunately, the way they have to be. So they have to be four separate distinct motions, unless the council's comfortable with us just stacking a whole bunch of it together in one.
Well, that's.
Okay.
That's up to the chair.
I apologize.
Don't worry about it, we'll get to it.
Any further discussion? Very good, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number 11. Review discuss amending CDBG fiscal year 20 to move Activity 4D Code Enforcement Funds to Activity 6C Parks and Recreation, will fund installation of new equipment at the Main Street Rotary Club Park. Entertain a motion to recommend to town council for approval.
So moved. A second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Mr. Manager.
I just wanna say, as an aside, I know we're moving on these grant monies for the code enforcement, however, I think under the new grant, we do have a health inspector that will be coming forward. Uh, under the grant, so that will be coming to council for the health inspector. Um, so we finally have a candidate that was identified, is going through the process right now, so that would be under the next funding for years, not affect these grants, but because that question already comes up, you know, we keep having these in the grants, and we're not able to fill it, we do have the health inspector coming forward. Uh, we did have a possible candidate for the building inspector portion, however, that individual had taken another job, so we will continue to seek that position.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number 12. Review discuss accepting the quote by Emmy O'Brien of $53,342.50 for the removal of damaged playground equipment and installation of new equipment at the Main Street Rotary Club Park. Entertain a motion to recommend to town council for approval.
So moved. A second.
Thank you, Captain. Thank you, Miss Dean. Any discussion? Councilor Adams.
Is there a big difference here between Childscapes, you're talking about $30,000 difference of removal installation, was there anything big that you saw in the quotes that were what they proposed, that to what, O'Brien had recommended?
Um, yeah, I I think it was just the price of the equipment itself. Um, Childscapes uh was trying to match the um the number of equipment that Emmy O'Brien had originally submitted a design, and um they, Childscapes gave us a similar design, but the equipment was more expensive.
Okay. Do they have separate, like they contracted somebody else for this this equipment?
Um, I I believe so, I I don't know all the specifics of the subcontractors.
So the way it works, uh, we went through the FAC 104, uh, state contract, which allows you to shop the the state uh uh site brushings, um, and playground landscape architects, all these different categories, right? So in there, Katie looked for the ones that had playground, contacted them, asked for a quote based on Emmy O'Brien, what they provided. Emmy O'Brien is, can use multiple different um equipment providers to get equipment. Childscape, I think, only uses one equipment provider, right? So they might not have the level of competition, yeah. Um, and so, and Compan, um, I remember looking for McCann Fields, I did not, I was not impressed with them, so it's better that we didn't get response.
Thank you.
Anyone else on the committee? Any audience? Very good, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number 13. Advert?
First, a second.
Can you just move the office on line?
All those in favor? Unanimous of all present. We are adjourned.